Okay, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the Norton Planning Board's meeting of Tuesday, June 8th, 2021. I'm gonna start with just a quick introduction about the remote participation guidelines we are continuing to operate under. Bit going. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order imposing a limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Norton's Planning Board is being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend the meeting can be found on the Town of Norton's website. To join the meeting, you can use the Zoom link available in the meeting agenda. You can also join using the Zoom app using meeting ID 6389291060. You can also dial a number post on the meeting agenda. You can also view the meeting live on Norton Cable Access Channel 15 or the next day on Norton Media Center's YouTube page. Again, at this point, no in-person attendance of members of the public is being permitted, but every effort would be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In addition, please feel free to email questions to the board ahead of or during the meeting to Paul DiGiuseppe, the town planner. Additionally, meeting materials for this meeting are available on the Town of Norton's Planning Board's website. Every effort is being made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we'll post on the Town of Norton's website an audio, a video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings as soon as possible thereafter. All that being said, we will have further updates on the remote participation at the end of the meeting. So look forward to that in terms of further discussion. So getting into our agenda for the meeting today. I don't believe we have anything in terms of planning board business or policies that we won't be covering later. And we didn't have any, Paul, I did not see bills or warrants in the folder, so don't really have any of those.
Right. One did come in of peer review from Amory for 242 Mansfield.
Okay.
Came in this afternoon.
Okay, so that'll be available to review at our next meeting. That's fine. And keep going. We do not have any minutes to approve at this point, but we'll be keeping up with those as soon as we can kind of get some additional support on that front in terms of the compilation of the minutes. But we'll move forward with that as soon as we can. The next item on the agenda is a review of findings and conditions and execution decision for 242 Mansfield Avenue. It's an application for a site plan approval and special permit for a marijuana establishment and 25 or more parking spaces. So again, the public hearing on this is closed, but we are reviewing the decision which Paul had made available in the folders and submitting any comments or additional edits we would like to have made to the decision. So again, if everybody has a chance to look at the decision, if there are any specific comments that we want to raise about specific line items, let's try to reference the section of the decision that we're referring to and then as much as possible the point number just to make sure we're all looking at the same thing. So does anyone have any specific comments in regard to either the standard conditions of approval or the specific conditions that are in the draft decision? Nothing specifically? Do we have anything that we want to add in here? I know Paul had provided the list of conditions that we're in, have our tracking document here. Anything specific that we'd like to raise at this point? I had one thing that I wanted potentially add, but I won't kind of occupy the, occupy the stage if somebody else has anything, but something that I was looking to add and Paul, I don't, I didn't see it covered at any of the other points, but looking at the post occupancy on page number, let's say this is page number six, so point number eight talks about prior commencement of the operation. The facility provides the police department, fire department, building commissioner, and the board with management staff and key holders. I thought that it might also be, whether it was in point number eight or kind of following that, to ask for there to be a documented plan showing how the applicant plans to adjust operations during Xfinity Center events and for that to be shared with the police and fire department. Do they guys have any thoughts on that idea?
Tim, kind of along those lines, should we put something in there about, you know, no parking during, for events? That's business parking only or something like that? I know that's something they verbally agreed to and had no intention of having event parking there. I don't know if that's kind of along the same lines of what you're thinking as well.
Yeah, I know that we, that was something that was in the tracking. Paul, was something that got made into a specific condition in the draft or is that something that did not make it into the official draft?
I don't think I ended up putting it in there, but we certainly did discuss it and I remember Andre agreeing that they would not allow for Xfinity event, parking for Xfinity events. That would just be limited to, it would just be limited to their customers.
Okay. So that's, it's essentially an Xfinity Center event bullet point that we were adding at this point. So we would add the parking at the facility is not to, is not to, is not to be used for events at the nearby Xfinity Center and a written plan for how the applicant will adjust operations during live events will be provided to police and fire. Does that make sense to everybody?
Yes.
Okay. Any members of the board have anything they wanted to say yea or nay on that or? I am obviously just one person.
Yeah, no, I mean, that sounds good, Tim. I think that's, that's in line with what we discussed.
I would agree with that.
This is Scott. I will as well.
Sounds good to me. Other than that, they're not going to change any operating procedures during days of events, though, as was talked about, correct? That's how I understood it.
That was how I understood it as well. I think they had said they might add some additional security personnel or something like that, but just kind of a document. They weren't gonna shut down earlier or anything since they, I think, were expecting to be closed by the time a standard event would let out anyway, but they said that they would go for the plan for how to deal with, obviously, lots of foot traffic on both ends of the event.
I seem to recall, I may be mistaken, but I thought they had said too that at the end of the day, they would put a gate up across their entryway, but I might be mistaken.
I don't recall a gate and that would just stop foot traffic anyway?
Oh, right, for foot traffic, but, and still that would be covered under an operations plan that you're calling for.
Yeah, not a full flood. They've already provided a very detailed operations plan of the facility itself, just a, what they plan to do in regards to events. Yeah.
Right, right.
Okay. Is there any additional edits or comments regarding the conditions that are in the decision?
Tim, I didn't have any in reviewing it.
Okay.
Go ahead, Alan.
I was just gonna say it was the best looking decision I've read since I've been on this board.
I believe it is also the only decision that you've read since you've been on the board now, so that, uh, that does create a bit of a scale there, but that's okay. Nobody else has, has any comments? Again, I'll just read this aloud, so. Scott, go ahead.
Chairman, real quick, again, I had a question to Paul. For the session that I met that documented in the decision as well, having reviewed the videos, submitting that document with the town clerk, does that need to be part of this or no? Is there any conflict of signing? Or is that all, does that be part of the record or no? Do you know?
It, it, it doesn't typically get attached to it. It's, it's on file with the clerk's office, but we don't, I've not ever attached one. I think the only aspect of this we could probably add in the decision area that you voted tonight on the condition, but it doesn't change the vote on the special permits themselves, so.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Just want to confirm that. Thank you. Yeah, and you, you, you're eligible to vote tonight.
Okay. Okay. So again, I'll just read what I have for wording for that new condition here. So we have it as well. Paul, I'm gonna keep these as track, this is a track change in the document, so that you have it. Since it's, I'm not sure if everybody got an alert, but Paul has no Wi-Fi at the moment. That's why he's dialing in. I think it's amazing that we've made it through 15 months of this without anybody having an internet issue. So we almost made it. So I have parking facilities, only moves for patrons of facility or staff of the facility itself and not for events held at the Xfinity Center. Just the operator shall provide a written plan of how operations and, operation and security may be adjusted during events at the Xfinity Center to the Norton Police and Fire Departments. So I've got that. Paul, I will, unless anybody has anything else, I would look for action to vote on the approval of conditions.
So moved as noted by Tim.
Thank you, Julie, for the motion and Scott for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go to the members for a vote. I will start with Wayne.
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Okay. Moving right along. We have the continuation of public hearing, special permit 494 for Zero Rear Eddie Street. It's an application for a special permit for a common driveway duplexes and development in the Wellham Chester district. I do believe we have representatives from this project on the call with us this evening. Paul, I'm not sure exactly who we want. See people coming off of no camera here, so Mr. Costa, would you like to just give the board an update on where the project is now and what you see as the path forward? Sure, Paul, go ahead.
I would say it, I, I can't see, is Sam Wydak there?
Uh, no. I see Mr. Costa, Mr. Hickson, and Mr. Keys. And Mr. Keys, I'm not sure is a part of this project and I believe he is a resident.
Mr. Costa and Mr. Hickson actually represent the Jakeson property owner.
Okay.
Have raised objections.
Understood. So we are looking for... So what was the name of the applicant who we are looking to hear from this evening?
Sam Wydak. You know, I have an email from him at five o'clock asking for tonight's Zoom info, which, you know, it's on the agenda and it's on the planning board website.
Okay, so there is a chance that he was not able to receive that, that Zoom link in good faith, despite its availability. Understood. I know we've talked, I know speaking for the board, we had talked about trying to close this public hearing if we didn't get an update. I don't think that we would do, since the applicant has expressed that they want to give us an update on the project, I would hesitate to do that. And if they aren't able to attend, I would look to continue this once again.
And Chair, can I just update a little bit more on this?
Please do.
The Conservation Commission is scheduled to hear this next week, so we don't have, we don't have any new information. When I spoke with the Conservation Director yesterday, they hadn't received any new information either, but that could have changed today, but they did, but I'm not aware of it.
Okay. They're scheduled to meet with Conservation on the 14th?
Uh, next Monday, yes.
And Paul, did, do they have a similar, I'll say rule in quotes, as we do about materials coming in a week in advance? So I guess maybe my question is, are, are they gonna continue hearing that agenda item or will they not have enough time to review material?
I, I don't know if they have a rule, but I do know that when I heard from the Conservation Director, when materials come in late that, they continue items. But I don't know where they're at now, but if I find out what they're doing, I'll let the board know.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. Costa and Mr. Hickson for attending. I think that, I understand, I see you have your hand up. I'm gonna, I'll just finish my little diatribe here. I think that I'm happy to hear a little bit of what you have to say, but I'm hesitant to let you, to go too far into it, given that the applicant themselves isn't here to, isn't here to respond. And I'd be, we'd be looking to, I think, continue this to our next meeting.
May I, Mr. Chairman? May I speak?
Yes, please do.
Thank you. So my one question I had was, I know that the hearing was open some time ago, so will we have the opportunity to speak and explain our opposition to the petition before the hearing's closed?
Yes, that is my, yes. I think our position was that I don't believe that at this point, the project is in a state where it would necessarily be fit for approval, so if we were to close the public hearing, it would essentially have been due to nonresponsiveness, not in the affirmative.
Right, that's, that's the other question I, I had is that the applicant had, had this, it's on the agenda, we were able to find Zoom link. I'm, I'm not sure why. The applicant's not here and is not asking for a continuance.
They expressed that they intended to be here. I will do my, I'm doing my utmost to treat this as a matter of good faith and make sure that we are able to get an update from them. If they are scheduled to be with Conservation on the 14th, then having them join us on our next meeting will hopefully provide a substantial, substantive update. If not, we will be at the same point that we were leading into this meeting. But we will definitely, when, either at, I would say at the next meeting, that you will have an opportunity to speak regardless. How's that?
If I may just ask one other question, has, has the board had the opportunity to see the, the letter that we submitted?
We have seen letters from, I assume you represent Winslow?
That's right.
Yes, we have.
Okay, so if, if the board's preference is to hear, hear from us when the applicant is, is present, then at that time, I will, I would love to speak because there's some aspects of the letter that I would like to provide some clarity to.
Understood. Thank you very much, Mr. Costa. Okay. Paul, did you have anything further to add or do you think that we're safe at this point, given that the meeting is 20 minutes old to continue to our next meeting, which I believe is the 22nd, unless we have a skip going on?
I, I think if you want to continue, that, that's fine.
Does anybody have any additional thoughts that they, um, want to share about this?
One item, I don't want to speak for any of the members that aren't present, but I remember several of us vocalized that, you know, if, if there was another slip in attendance and a forced continuation, that we would be looking to a little bit more aggressively close the public hearing and not continue this on. So it's, it's a little frustrating to see yet another event like this, but I think we probably need to send a very strong message that the next time has to be the last time, right? We can't keep continuing this and having the public of the town join to send their resources and timeline out as well, so.
Yes, alright.
I just want to at least vocalize that because I think last time we did the same discussion where enough is enough and here, here we are pushing it out again, so I just want to mention that.
Yes, I know that in this specific case, the applicant had reached out to Paul and said that they would be attending, so there was...
Well, I, I reached out to them.
I believe they are here. I believe they are here. Okay. Okay. I see you raising your hand, sir, so I will.
Upgrade.
So that renders last five to six minutes of my, my own rambling a little bit moot, but sir, if I could, if you could please state your name and just kind of start from there.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I can even, gentlemen. Essentially, I just want to go over and I apologize for the amount of continuations we've had. We weren't trying to get a determination from the Conservation Commission as to the avenue of approach that they were gonna require us to do prior to resubmitting to you guys and then potentially having to have that then changed. So we wanted to just present a final plan to the board members.
Understood. So at this point, there has, had there been any updates? There have been no updates to the, the plans or anything to this point that have been submitted and we're still waiting for confirmation from Conservation.
As of now, we are finalizing soil management portion of it. We're going out in the next potentially week or two with the town's consultant to do soil evaluations and then from there, soil management will be then finalized, presented to the Conservation Commission for their approval or changes and then we'll hopefully have a finalized plan for the board members.
Okay. So at this point, just so you're aware, I know that Paul has surprised you of this, that since we first opened this public hearing in July, in mid-July of 2020, two of the board members who did initially hear the presentation by you are no members, are no longer members of the board. So at present, you currently have only five members of the board who are able to vote on this, on this, on this special permit.
Yes.
And five are also needed for a special permit approval.
Correct.
So making sure you understand that. So...
I, I apologize. I thought there was a little more, you know, you know, communication between boards, just like, oh, it got continued, you know, at the Conservation Commission or in the Planning Board, you know. We, we're, I thought we were all just kind of, you know, going forward together and I, and I apologize for the lack of communication throughout the continuation requests.
Understood, thank you. I know it is sometimes a little bit disjointed, especially during the past year that we have had in 2020 and 2021, which brings in all sorts of unique circumstances. And I hope that we can kind of continue to keep going on a path.
And the case law is that if a lot isn't accessible, providing an alternative means of access like a sh-...
providing an alternative means of access like a shared driveway or a driveway through a budding land, that doesn't make up for the problem that the lot doesn't have frontage. The lot has to be accessible through that boundary on the public way. And each of these lots have a problem where they don't have that accessibility. And in my letter, I laid out in so much detail, I wanted to explain lot by lot, why none of these lots have what legally constitutes frontage. So in other words, we respectfully submit that these lots would require variance for frontage. So conceptually, what they have is a plan that shows four lots with no legal frontage on Totten Avenue to be accessed by a common driveway. So there should be a request for a variance for frontage, but there isn't one. The problem is, if we go sort of lot by lot, Lot one, the, the boundary along Totten Avenue has a steep slope and a continuous, a continuous guardrail along the entire frontage. And we have case law in Massachusetts that's directly on point that says that's not frontage because we can't access the property through the guardrail and through that steep slope. It's no curb cut. What they have on Lot one is a driveway that goes through, out of Lot one and through Lot two. And that's their only means of access, so that's not frontage. And then on Lot two, it's the next one down from north to south. That one has a curb cut on Totten Avenue, this only one with a curb cut. But then the driveway has to go around through Lot one to get to the actual buildable portion of, of a lot because of the pond. And so we have the same problem. We have a physical impediment to access. We have the ponds. So instead of having access to the lot, they have to go around through the driveway. And then lots three and four have the same problem. They have a continuous guardrail, a steep slope and a pond, and then the buildable area is on the outside. And so that doesn't legally constitute frontage. And so the problem that we see is that essentially, if the board accepts this laid out, instead of, instead of being required to, to follow a subdivision process, they're trying, they're circumventing that by just proposing a common driveway. But if, if this common driveway was considered a road and, and this was a subdivision plan, the lot couldn't be laid out this way. It would have to, this, this plan would have to be reconfigured. If this was, if this plan was reconfigured so that this driveway was instead approved as a subdivision road, there's no way that because of the lot area requirements, they're, they're including Meadowbrook Pond in, in the total calculation of lot area. And then the contiguous subplan, which is the buildable lot, that's what's buildable. It's, it's, it's across the pond. It's blocked by a guardrail. So if this came in for a subdivision approval, I don't think you'd have four lots. You might have two or three lots. So this is really more dense than what should be allowed under your zoning by law. Because every lot is supposed to have 150 feet of frontage. And so, as I said, I, I described this in so much detail in my letter, but this is a, a, a basic requirement of zoning law in Massachusetts. So we've cited cases, there's cases on point, there's a case where a guardrail blocked all access to a property and the court said it didn't have frontage, the Paulows versus Planning Board of Braintree. That's this case, you know, a lot that's blocked by a continuous guardrail. So the lots as laid out shouldn't be approved because they don't meet zoning requirements. They, they, even though an A and R was endorsed under Massachusetts law, that, all that means is that at the time, the planning board thought that the plan didn't show a subdivision. But this is before the planning board for a special permit. And so it's a zoning issue. Does, does the plan meet zoning requirements such that it's, it's eligible for a special permit? And our position is that the answer to that is definitely no. And our client is impacted by that because this plan provides for more density than should be allowed. It, 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 it's acknowledged by the applicant. It's, it's in their application for special permit. The applicant is proposing a common driveway which will serve as access to four frontage lots on Totten Avenue. Common driveway is required due to the location of the Meadowbrook Pond obstructing access to the majority of the frontage. So in the application itself, they acknowledge that the pond obstructs access to the majority of the frontage. That's a subdivision. That's not, it shouldn't, I respectfully submit it shouldn't have been endorsed. But it has been endorsed, the A and R. That doesn't preclude the planning board from now looking at the plan and considering, does it meet zoning requirements? Does, do these lots actually have frontage? And our position is the answer is no. And if, you know, if the board was inclined to ask for town council's input, I, I, I would definitely be in favor of that, you know, but that's up to the board.
Thank you, Mr. Costa.
Thank you.
No, I, I agree with you specifically and I, Sam, I'll get to in a second. But I agree that when we do an A and R, we very clearly have required on those decisions to state this is not reflective of this being legal, this being zoned properly. This is purely a delineation of the lot lines is what an A and R is. And again, if you're, as, as you suggested, have cited specific case law and that is something that, that I think that we would ask town council to weigh in on from our perspective. I am not a lawyer and I don't pretend to be one, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Sam, if you, if you wanted to kind of add a comment, again, the comments are going, are, would be directed to me and not directed at any of others.
Correct. I just want to make a, a point that at this time I was planning to continue this meeting. So therefore I had my proper representation at the time. The only thing I would like to have noted is that the precedence in town has already been set with numerous common driveways going through wetlands and through guardrails to access the buildable portions off of 140. You know, there's, there's just been numerous developments that did exactly what we are proposing. And I think that is in Norton's zoning, so I just want to, you know, kind of weigh that out.
Understood. Thank you, Sam, for, for comments. And Paul, I didn't see any comments from Amy in regards to the letter from Mr. Costa in the folder. I'm not sure if she's.
I don't.
I'm not sure if she has had, if she had reviewed it at a, at a previous point in time and the comments didn't make it into the folder. But if we could have that lined up.
Yeah, I made a note. I, I, I thought I, I believe I sent her the Mr. Costa's letter, you know, how many months ago, but I don't believe we've ever received a, a response back to on it. So I'll.
Yeah, it's possible there is a response and it's in a different, and we've put it in a different folder and in the time it was submitted in late February, so. We haven't, so we can continue to, to move forward in that respect as well. And, and I thank everybody for their participation this evening, even though it was a little bit awkward. And that's, that's what Zoom meetings are like sometimes.
Too many times.
Okay, so unless there are any further comments on this specific item, we would look to continue this to, I believe we had said our meeting of July the 13th.
This is Scott. I'm, I'm motion to continue to July 13th for the thinking.
I'll, I'll second, because I'm assuming it's only Scott and I and you, Tim, who can do that.
I believe anybody can move to continue the item. We, would, can, would be, I don't think that Alan and Wayne would be able to vote on the decision, but agenda item is agenda management rather than acting on a specific item. Otherwise, we would be at three votes of a seven-member board, which doesn't seem feasible.
Fair enough. Good point.
So unless there's any further discussion on the motion, I would look to go to the members for a vote and I will start with Wayne.
I stand.
Scott?
Yeah.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. So that is four votes to continue. Special permit 494 to our meeting of July the 13th. Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. I look forward to seeing you again in a few weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on to a couple of additional things to close out the agenda. This is something that's kind of happened a little bit rapidly. But we do have some updates from town council regarding in-person meetings. So the, essentially the guidance that the board, that the planning board and the town and every other board has received. Again, as we, as I mentioned previously, the governor has proposed legislation to extend the state of emergency regarding open meeting, public meetings. However, that has not been taken up yet. And because that is set to expire in a week, we need to pretend as if it's going to expire on the 15th. So with that said, the goal at this point is to have a hybrid meeting. So that will be people in person and available remotely and public available to attend remotely as well at our next meeting on June the 22nd. And Paul has said that the Norden Media Center is available for that meeting. So that is where our meeting will be. And we will be updating the, putting, posting the agenda appropriately. So again, instead of being remote participation only, it will specify that the public is welcome to the in-person location, but it will also be held virtually as advertised. Does anybody have any questions or comments about that at this time?
Yes, I can't wait to get back to in-person meetings soon. See, we might not have, we need to take notes and put it on Facebook. It's, it's like old times.
Yeah, that'll, that will be different. If you want to take notes, I'm sure that Paul would accept your resume for a secretary position, so. Don't, don't volunteer too loud to take notes, Peter.
It, it, it certainly our hope and what we're hearing right now is that hybrid meetings will be available to us going forward, which fortunately the media center has the technology at the media center and at the libraries and possibly we may be expanding it so that people can, will have, the, the public will have a choice of attending or using Zoom. So the monitors that are at the media center will be what you would be looking at or your own laptops. So and one thing I can do to, is as we're starting to go back to in-person, I, I, I can follow up and see how do you want material presented to you at the meeting. You know, whether you're okay bringing a laptop in and just going digital the way we've been doing. If you want to print your own copies, if you want us to print copy, you know.
Yeah, I think if anybody has any specific preferences, please forward those to Paul directly. I know I'll plan to bring a laptop for the simple reason that I'm used to it at this point. And I know it'll be there. And we do have the digital files for everything available, so even if something that we, a certain thing we're going to look at, we have it there. And we can pull it up on the screen. But yeah. Paul, I don't know if you want to, if we want to plan some point either later this week or next week, just to make sure that everybody understands, since we do have two members who are at the virtual meeting this evening, what the plan is. And make sure that we know how everybody would like to be able to review what we have coming up on the agenda in two weeks.
Maybe it's just a point of order for meetings going forward that the applicant should be able to make the presentation. If it's via Zoom and not rely on, say, a board member or Paul or whatever, they should be able to make the virtual presentation.
Yes.
It gets very.
To do that.
Look at and it's, it happens in the zoning world all the time.
Yeah.
That should be on the owners of the applicant, not of us, I believe, in my opinion.
To do that, I think, Paul, is there, is there an open Wi-Fi available at the media center?
I believe there is, but I have to check with Jason and see. Okay, that's, if, if, if there isn't, then that's a, I can't imagine they wouldn't to me, but because that would be a, a, a big setback if not, because then, if there isn't, then, you know, we would, you know, have to download to our desktops or to our hard drives the files. But I'm, I'm meaning to ask Jason if there's Wi-Fi.
Yeah, just to, to ensure that both members of the board, as well as to Alan's note, any applicants who are looking to present are able to log into the Zoom call and then share their screen via the Zoom call so that members of the board can see it as well as any members of the public or other attendees attending.
Right.
The Zoom meeting will essentially be the driver for anything digital that's being shared.
Yes. So as far as the board's participation, I was looking back at what we adopt, what the town adopted prior to COVID, which is you're still, you know, as a board member, you should make every effort to attend. And so the prior remote participation policy said you still have to have a, a physical forum in order to have a meeting in order for other people. So I guess technically you could have four people in person, three who do not, but still we're, we're pursuing this as, you know, prior to COVID that the expectation is if you make it unless there are some, you know, extenuating circumstances. But you would let myself know and, or, and I would let, let the chair know. But for the public and I, I assume also for applicants, if there's flexibility, I, I, I believe that there's flexibility for them to be able to choose which way they want to participate.
I think that this is a very strange moment in time and that if there are any applicants or butters or other people that choose to attend virtually for whatever reasons they prefer, then that's fine.
Right.
And I would say that as much as it can, that extends to members of the board as well. If there's anybody who is not comfortable attending an in-person meeting, given everything that's happened over the past 15 months, please share that with Paul and he can be, can make sure that we follow all the remote participation guidelines that we need to.
So Tim, maybe to kind of follow up on that point, like is the expectation that we're masked, unmasked, distanced at all? If we're there, the public's there, you know, has there been any guidance given across the town for, for things like that?
Well, well, Julie, the guidance we have is if, you know, from the state, which is if you're fully vaccinated, you, you do not have to wear a mask. So, you know, I think it's up everyone's individual choice there, what they want to do.
I think that if there is specific guidance that the town is, that the, if there are a specific kind of guideline that the board of selectmen or other boards are following or that the town, or that the town manager or other members of the, everything that's going on in town hall are looking to follow for public meetings. If that information can be shared and disseminated, that would be helpful. So that way we're not, every board isn't making their own decisions in isolation. Everything feels different. So that way, we're not, every board isn't making their own decisions in isolation. Everything feels different. Uh, I think it, it can't hurt to simply put up a couple of flyers that, again, remind people of what the state guidelines are, but kind of just get people distanced should they ask for it. And, uh, treat your neighbor how you want to be treated is generally how I'm trying to approach everything right now.
Yeah, we, we can set up, we can also set up so that there's distance between us and the audience. Uh, right now, I mean, June twenty-second, zero rarity is the only thing we have. Uh, I don't have any new items. I mean, there could be an A and R, but.
Zero rarity is not on the twenty-second. That was continuing to.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's July. Sorry. So we might not, actually, we might not even have a meeting. So, uh, I do want to get it set up. I mean, we've got everything taken care of on our end. Should something occur, but it's possible that June twenty-second, there's, it's canceled for, due to the lack of, uh, agenda items.
You just jinxed us, Paul. That, that has never happened in my tenure at, on the planning board, that we didn't have an agenda item.
It hasn't happened for a few years. It has happened.
That's right, everybody. I can't wait.
Actually, actually, it might be a good opportunity to start talking about spending more time on the master plan.
Yes, that is another item that I was going to throw to you before we moved to adjourn this evening, Paul.
That's right, that's right, Tim and Paul again. It feels good to be back to in-person meetings soon, so I can get back to the in-person meetings with my notepad and my pen and we can, we can elect the old days for this pandemic, and this pandemic is on its way out, and hopefully stay that way.
Thank you, Peter. All right. Paul, did you have anything that you wanted to add for members of the board, any members of the public who maybe attended regarding master plan?
Well, we're still within the cycle, uh, the period, uh, for reviewing and providing comments to, uh, to Serpent, who's our consultant. Uh, I had emailed, uh, uh, the, uh, the links to, if you want to, you know, first of all, to see their documents, and then another link for, uh, providing any comments to them. So, uh, don't send them to me, send them to, to the folks at Serpent. Uh, if anyone needs anything, uh, you know, another email, just, uh, email me and I'll send the link back out.
Email you for the link. Do not email you their comments. Understood.
Right.
Okay.
Paul, so I, I have every intention of reading it, most likely commenting, knowing myself. Uh, is there an email address so I don't have to fill out that Google form?
Uh, you know, if, if you're just writing up your comments, you can just send them to me and I'll forward it to them.
All right. I'm not sure how I'm going to review it yet. I, I, I'm, I'm, I gotta strategize, but I'll, I'll let you know and then you can, you can help me make my comments correctly or to them.
Okay.
I have, I have a habit of like redlining and hard copy, so we'll see if I'm going to do that or not.
Julie, Julie, Julie.
It's a work habit. It's a work habit.
No, I didn't think Orrin was on the board anymore.
Well, you gotta, Paul knows. This is, this is right up my wheelhouse.
Okay.
No, uh, I, I can, you know, again, if you want to do it that way, you know, just however you want to get the comments to me, Julie, go ahead. But if, if others, you know, have maybe less, uh, substantial, just use the Google form that they created.
Okay, yeah. Let me, I'll see how it goes and we'll go from there.
Okay. Okay. Well, I think that takes care of the items we had for this evening, unless any members of the board had anything further they wanted to add.
Would you do adjourn?
I can agree. So Alan with the motion and Wayne with the second, was that correct?
Correct.
Sure.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, I will vote for members for a vote. Wayne?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Scott?
Yeah.
And I will vote yes. Thank you very much for, everyone for your time. And pending an agenda item, we will see everybody in person in two weeks.